...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finally, thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here. We ask that you be with us all and all of our families. You got us through tonight's agenda and help us do our best for our city. Always think we play your name.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We are on our first item, which was the proclamation for the Red Cross Centennial. We need to change that one to our March meeting at the request of City Clerk. That's supposed to be at the March meeting instead of this meeting. So that will just be transferred over to the next meeting, that proclamation. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Wait a minute. Okay, go ahead.
Under the consent agenda, I'd be able to put that into old business.
Okay. J, I think. Yes, J. It'll be J. Okay. Yes.
Since I think there's going to be a lot of more discussion on item A under Old Business, I would like to move just preceding Mr. Huffman. I guess it's before his since he just moved his to the last item. I'd like to move J to the end of the Old Business.
A to K?
Yeah, J or K, or mine is J and his is K, however.
All right. Any other changes? We have a motion. We have a second. To approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voted for the motion. All right. You have in your agenda package tonight the minutes of the January 30th special call meeting, as well as the February the 6th council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or changes that need to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those two sets of minutes. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. All members voting for the motion. Minutes approved. Okay, we will go into our 10-minute public input period. First one on is Andy Bonner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Andy Bonner and I'm a Canton resident. I live, I'm here tonight to thank a number of people at the City of Canton. I live up in Solay in Laurel Canyon and we have quite a steep hill. And when it comes to snow, and when it snows and ice is over, it's impossible to drive up and down the hill. Late Tuesday evening, all the weekend part of Thursday, it was impossible for residents to get down the hill. Thursday morning, I called and talked to interim City Manager Glenn Cumming about the hill. He told me that he and Fire Chief Dean Floyd had already driven up Laurel Canyon in a four-wheel drive vehicle and Glenn had already dispatched the crew to plow and treat the hill. Thirty minutes later, I called the guardhouse and was told that the parkway had been cleared and the hill was okay to drive. I want to thank Glenn, Dean, and the entire city crew who worked on clearing the parkway. As you know, we have a number of senior citizens with medical issues and they're very relieved to know they can get up and down the parkway to make doctor appointments and pick up prescriptions, et cetera. Also, it's important to note that the EMTs can respond with no problem if they're needed. In closing, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the city employees with the tremendous job they did during the recent ice storm.
Thank you. Thank you. Angie Wiggins.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I'm Angie Wiggins, the area rental manager of our Canton location with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. I also am a native from Canton, Georgia. I'm a high, uh, Sequoia High School. And I wanted to just speak for a moment about the excise tax that's being voted on tonight. I know there's a lot of misconception about this tax being a pass-through tax and that's really what I wanted to address and just provide some of our numbers and educate you guys a little bit. As the tax was originally intended, it was a pass-through tax for downtown communities. In our home city locations, most of our renters and our customers are local Canton residents. From looking at numbers from January 2013 to December 2013, 96% of our renters were Canton residents. When you break down our business mix, so you can look and see if really if that is something that was passed through to another company, 40% of our customers are renting for leisure, so taking a family vacation, taking a weekend trip. This tax will make their costs go up on their rental, an average of a dollar a day. 45% of our renters have a car in the shop and many of these customers are having to foot the bill for the rental car. 15% of our renters are traveling for business. Again, that's a area that people say is a pass-through tax. Most of our business travelers are local small business owners. So again, this is an added burden to them. This tax will raise the cost of rentals for low-cost businesses, dealerships, as well as Canton residents. As a native of Cherokee County and a member of this business community for the past seven years, we are a part of the community, want to be a productive part, contribute to Canton. However, I'm not for continuing to raise taxes on the citizens of Canton, which is basically what the tax will do. I urge you all to take a look at what the tax really is and what it's going to cause the citizens of Canton and vote no on passing the rental excise tax and raising Canton taxes. Thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter.
Thank you.
Not sure. Is this K. Bachmeyer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is K. Bachmeyer. I also work for Enterprise Rent-A-Car and we would like to thank you for having the opportunity to come talk to you tonight about the excise tax and the passage of the excise tax. Some of the information that Angie talked about, it will be redundant, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to talk about the information and get as much information to all the council members that we possibly can of what this is really all about. With respect to our last numbers, in the month of December of 2013, we did 689 total tickets out of our Canton location. Only 90 of those tickets that we wrote were eligible for pass-through money to another company that was outside of Cherokee County or Canton. So 77% of the business that we did in December of 2013, that business was taxed by the local residents. The local residents and the local businesses were taxed on that business. Passing this tax will in fact be an additional tax on your residents. It is not a pass-through tax and this will be the burden of your local residents. This is an opportunity, as Angie mentioned, this was done originally through the arena tax in Fulton County, which eventually went to Savannah to pass the tax for their convention center. And the layer was passed for all the communities to do things, to build parks, to build community projects, to build fire halls, whatever it may be, to work within their community. The last opportunity where we talked about this, we wanted to use this money or the proposal was to use this money for rent abatement for the Main Street project and that failed the last vote. And some of the council members here today were present at that and some of the council members are new. So as I understand it, the new proposal really doesn't designate this money for anything. It goes to a general fund to the Main Street Council or the Main Street project and that's not, you know, we don't want to pass a tax just to have something go into a general fund. When we've had the opportunity over the last couple of years to talk to council members or the mayor about this, we've had great discussions with people about this and educating them about the tax and we've had a lot of great success in changing some people's opinions about what this truly was. We have not, for the folks that have voted against this tax, we have not had them seek us out. We have not had them talk to us about what this tax was, what our thoughts were, or even how much this is going to contribute. Being a private company, we know exactly how much money is going to go into this and we really don't feel like you have a good idea as to what this money figure is. We support Canton. We support a strong community. We support the things that you want to do and we want to be a part of the solution and certainly not a problem. And if this is something that has to be passed and you have to pass it tonight, I would just encourage you to really focus on looking at something to really support your education process here in the City of Canton. The opportunity to maybe build another park for your families to spend time in. At the very least, you could reinvest in the community and maybe build another firehouse. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time and thank you.
Hey, Gold.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't know until about 10 minutes ago I was going to be speaking tonight, so I hope I can read my own chicken scratch. But being as I did write all this down very quickly and it is chicken scratch and I might have a hard time reading it, it also goes to show how strongly I believe in the words that I'm about to say and how important I think the excise tax is on car rental agencies. I am speaking in support of the excise tax. That tax would not necessarily go into a general fund. It would help the Main Street program, which isn't a general fund. It would also help economic development, possibly even tourism throughout the City of Canton. I believe it is mostly a pass-through tax. Now, if the car rental agencies don't want to pass it through, they could certainly absorb that extra dollar and a few cents a day themselves and not pass it on to the customer. But for the nice part, it will be passed on to the customer. Those customers will barely notice it, if at all. The GMA supports this potential tax applied to various communities. It's something that they think is a worthy and appropriate tax to enforce. Also, we do not have just one car rental agency anymore. We have another one coming into Canton. Various car dealerships also rent cars. I certainly haven't seen the figures on exactly who rents cars. But again, if the car rental agencies don't want to pass the tax on to their customer, I think the fair thing to do would be to absorb it themselves out of their, I'm sure, nice profits. And lastly, I don't really understand the difference between the car rental excise tax that's proposed and the hotel motel tax that has been in place for a number of years. It also is passed on to the customer and yes, there are plenty of Canton people that end up staying in hotels because their pipes broke, that they can't get into their house, something happened that forced them out for a night or even longer. So there are Canton residents that stay in our hotels and motels and pay the tax. The hotel motel tax gives the total support of Canton tourism. Without Canton tourism, there are many things that we would not be able to provide for the citizens in Canton. I would be more than happy to provide a long list of those projects and events paid for by the hotel motel tax through Canton tourism. One of those things that I think most of the people here and also in the room probably attend are the Fourth of July fireworks. They wouldn't exist without the hotel motel tax and the fact that Canton tourism puts on that event among others. So my feeling is that it's a fair tax. I think the hotel motels in the City of Canton support it. They certainly have not objected that I've talked to and I talk to them every year for planning the Arts Festival. I think what's fair for the hotel motels is fair for the car rental agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Under our consent agenda, there we have a number of items, one of which we have renewed, but I'm going to read those items and if anyone wants any one of those items taken off the consent agenda for further discussion, just let me know. We will do that. The action on the Snovel Dam contract, monitoring contract. The action on fiscal year 2013 year-end budget amendment, which we discussed at the last meeting. Action on repeal of fire district ordinance. Action on appointment of new committee members, which we were given at, I think, the last meeting there. And we have moved the action on the rental car tax to item J under Old Business. Are there any of those that need to come off there other than the rental car? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, we have moved item A to item K under Old Business, so we'll begin with item B under Old Business. The action on the land disturbance ordinance amendment.
Mr. Rare, I'd like to make a motion that we can adopt the land disturbance ordinance as currently amended.
Okay, and this, you're including that with an effective date of April.
I'm sorry, effective, uh, that actually.
That will be immediate. Effective immediately. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Effective immediately.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, the action on the stormwater ordinance.
Make a motion that we adopt the storm ordinance, stormwater ordinance, effective immediately.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have a second. Any other discussion on this? This, that's, that's the, that would be the next item. That'd be the next. This is just basically changing the ordinance so that relative to the use of the stormwater tax. Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm sorry.
Second, I just want to discuss. On stormwater ordinance, it is unfortunately written, it's got way too many words in it. So I'm guessing I'm going to ask for some clarification, but before, before I get that, I want to bring up an issue that is, I've been talking to some of the staff members recently, that is about I and I and the amount of. that is about INI and the amount of stormwater that goes into the sewer plant. I went through a tour over a year or so ago, and the water we're just pouring through there. And the gentleman who was leading us through, had a second. Previous stormwater manager, I mean sewer manager.
Oh, Brady Carr.
Brady, thank you.
Brady Carr.
Brady said, and said, well, with all the rain, he said, and the stormwater is flowing in here. So what are we doing? We're building an eight billion dollar plant over here to process. A lot of it is stormwater. I understand that doesn't make a lot of sense, although that's pretty common. But the amount of stormwater is not common in our city. And the reason it's not common in our city is because we haven't been spending the money to improve stormwater, which is not a sexy item. That is beneath the city streets that you don't see until you go down into that sewer plant. And you see that water going through there, gushing through there. The meter on measuring is tapped out. He can't even measure that high. So what I'm saying is that we need, we've got the money. This is the one fund that is operated correctly. We got the money. Now spend it on the projects that need to be done, rather than do the project and then figure out where you're going to get the money.
Mr. Hupman, this has to do with the ordinance itself? Are you, is that what you're addressing?
I'm addressing that.
As far as stormwater fees, you're not addressing that?
I'm not addressing fees.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm not addressing fees. I'm addressing the situation that we need to be able to, and we need to go in and spend those monies. I'm not saying how much it's spent. I'm not saying what the percentages should be, whether it's twenty-five, thirty, whatever you want to do. But what I'm saying is we need to take this thing and not make a vote. And we need to go back and look at the INI that we are having going through that plant. Most of it, and talking to some of the people in the know, come from the older section of Canton. Now, one gentleman explained to me, says you take one roof in downtown Canton that goes into the sewer system. And equate that to how many fletches that is in a John, in a suburb. You won't believe how many thousands and thousands of fletches it would take to equal what an inch of rainwater might do to our stormwater. The other thing is, is that these old manhole covers leak. They're built out of bricks and mortar, and they leak tremendous amount of water. This is another area that we need to look at. And there's studies that can be done to isolate where a lot of this additional or overabundance of stormwater comes from. Now, to do that is very costly. That's going to cost money. And I'm saying our stormwater projects, although they're not sexy, we need to go in there and start looking at it, do a study, find out where the biggest offenders are as far as sewers and roofs that are flowing into the sewer system. So I'm not sure, because of how worthy that that ordinance is, can we do these type things? It's just, stormwater and sewer, now here they are, they're coming together. Is it stormwater or is it sewer? Which one is it? We need to know. So I'm saying that this needs to be revisited. As it stands right now, it's just, it's way too worthy.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hupman. Mr. Hupman is addressing the use of funds. There's nothing in this ordinance that won't allow us to address stormwater issues. So the ordinance, actually, your discussion should probably have been saved for the next agenda item. But the ordinance itself, everything you've identified, unless I'm incorrect, can be addressed through this ordinance. Isn't that true, Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
So the ordinance itself will allow the addressing of the items or the issues that you're specifically identifying. There's nothing in here that prohibits that. So your point may, moving forward, be more appropriate to the next kind of on the agenda, which is how much revenue we raise for stormwater. Because every one of the things that you've highlighted is allowable under this ordinance. Again, I'll go to Mr. Dyer, who has gone through and cleaned up this language here. And it is complex. We know laws are complex.
Were you telling me it's cleaned up?
He, he's actually changed some of my language.
That I haven't seen.
We did make a revision to the one that was at the work session to add, we took that out of the sentence, and then we said, "Stormwater funds may only be used for the operation, administration." So that was added. "Enhancement, improvement, maintenance, or repair of the existing city drain system." So that's what's allowed. And then the rest of it is an exception to what we don't want to do, which is new construction as part of some other project.
Mr. Dyer, would that include fixing the drain that drains into the sewer?
Well, that's a different question.
That's the reason I asked.
Well, you can't put in the ordinance every specific example of what's up.
That's my point, we don't have flexibility.
This is total flexibility. Because you could say, "The water going into the sanitary sewer is because of a problem in the storm sewer. We're going to go fix the storm sewer." Then you can use stormwater funds to fix the storm sewer. So that's all you can say, is that you're going to use the money for the operation, administration, enhancement, improvement, makes or repair of the existing system. If the future councils disagree about what the existing system means, we'll have disagreements then. But we can't list everything that we can think of in an ordinance.
But I totally agree.
You can't list them all. That's the reason I said it's had flexibility.
Okay. All right, anyone else?
I don't see it.
Mr. McGrath?
I have one question. In section six hundred dash eleven, it says, "If the total cost of such project was, for example, an eighty-twenty split between the city and the state, state picking up eighty percent, city picking up twenty, then only twenty percent of the cost of the stormwater portion of the project could be funded using stormwater funds." My question is, eighty, twenty. Does this ordinance say that we would use twenty percent of, only pay twenty percent of the small twenty percent? Or would that be covering the entire twenty percent?
It would be the, it would be twenty percent of the, some portion of the twenty percent could be a stormwater project. Marietta Road's a good example. You were replacing drains and installing curbs and gutters.
So if our twenty percent obligation for the split cost of the project, twenty percent of that would come from stormwater?
Whatever the percentage of the twenty percent is stormwater, twenty percent of that can come from the stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I believe we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voted for the motion, with the exception of Mr. Hupman. Item D, action on reduction of stormwater fees. Mr. Cummings?
We've done, in the financial, our CFO and I have sat down, and we've done a review. And I would like to make a motion that we do a thirty-five percent reduction in stormwater fees. And what this, I'll get the.
And that would be effective April first?
Effective April first.
Okay, this year. Okay. Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What this does is we charge per impervious unit currently four dollars and eight cents. This reduction will lower it to two dollars and sixty-five cents. With this lowering, we will have slightly less at the end of the fiscal year, approximately one year's reserve of our, at our current budget rate in cash to address going forward. It's a sufficient amount of money. I think it's about six hundred and some thousand dollars in actual reserve funds going into fiscal two thousand fifteen. That's why I went and have proposed the thirty-five percent reduction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could I?
Sure.
How much would we have in the second year, Mr. Hupman? Is that, do we keep that balance, or does it keep going down?
It depends on, it of course depends on what you budget in the second year.
Assuming we just.
Keep equal.
Yeah.
You'll use probably about ninety thousand dollars estimate from the reserve. So now you'd have, going into fiscal two thousand sixteen, ninety to a hundred thousand less. It does decrease going forward from the reserve fund.
But you also have some growth there. Hopefully, that will be adding more money into.
You'll be adding more money into it. So I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to arrive at an exact amount. But using current day figures, the budget does for fiscal two thousand fifteen is greater than the amount that's in reserve. But the revenue should also go up. But assuming the same revenue amount and everything, I think it's about ninety thousand dollars use of reserves in two thousand fifteen. Rounding it off, we still had at the end of two thousand and fif, fiscal year two thousand fifteen, approximately a half a million in reserves, and we still got money to work in projects.
Mr. McGrath, Mr. Grant has his hand up there.
My understanding also, Mr. Mayor, that this, these fees could be reviewed on annual basis and adjusted as necessary.
Absolutely.
Based on what we've got budgeted to spend this year in stormwater, you know, what we've, our forecast is, I would like that is on projects.
The fiscal two thousand fourteen, and I got to get to thirty-five.
Not a good guess.
How about nine hundred and forty thousand, eight ninety-four for this year? Next year, with the thirty-five percent. I've got to go half again. It'll be somewhere around six hundred and eighty, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Those are projects that we've already identified?
The ones in this year are projects that we've identified.
And in that, those projects that we've identified, are any of them addressing INI?
Now, you're asking me a question.
A thought of mine.
I don't have the answer. Wait a second, once they have my answer. Repairs and maintenance to, repairs and maintenance to infrastructure. It doesn't address any specific INI. But there's two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in the budget for repairs and maintenance to infrastructure. That would be INI or other things. It depends on, it depends on the projects being brought forward. But there's two hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Could I go a little deeper? Go ahead, then, Mr. Grant has his hand. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. David Tavian.
If he, Dave, are you in the house? Could you come up, please, sir?
Actually, Joby would be the correct one to bring it up.
Well, Joby, you would.
What I'm, what I'm looking for is an idea of what the cost would be if we identified ten or fifteen of the most serious offenders of stormwater going into our sewer system, which would probably, probably be in the downtown area. I mean, are we talking about to rebuild a manhole? Are we talking about ten thousand dollars? Are we talking fifty thousand dollars? No?
Okay. Go ahead.
Can I take him off the hook on this one?
Okay.
And the reason I want to take him off is, it's always, already been recommended to me that we have to do a complete analysis of what all these issues are. So for him to pull and give you a number, he's pulling it fresh out of your hair.
I know that. I'm very aware of that. But what I'm trying to get to is, I'm trying to get to the point, are we budgeting enough, Mr. Cummings, to the area that is, is my concern? I hope it's everybody in the city's concern because it's underneath the streets and it's something we don't see on a day-to-day basis. And we're spending a lot of money out there on a new plant, which we got to do. I understand that. But there's where, that's what affects that plant, is how much is going through there? And if we can do what they call a smoke test, Mr. Talkswor said they have an expert in here at his company that can identify those type of issues. So we can indeed. We might need to spend more than two hundred and whatever the number was.
There's, there's two parts to it. If you look it over, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I know we're not supposed to be in dialogue, but there's the first part, if we can look and say, over the course of the next ten years, we got to do X amount of dollars. But yet we have only the capacity to address a certain amount of that each year, both from staff capability, from budgetary reasons. So to try and estimate what the total amount is, the only thing I can tell you is that we have never utilized, to my knowledge in the last few years, the total budgeted amount that we put for infrastructure. Now, for whatever reasons that is, I don't know. But this two hundred and sixty-one, if we had had that last year, I don't think we spent two sixty-one last year, did we? No. And so there's sufficient funds there on an annual basis.
That's part of my point, Mr. Cummings, is that we have the funds. And apparently, either we don't have the staff, we're just not looking at it because it's something we don't really see. And I'm thinking, I'm saying that the previous councils, we probably didn't address it then. I don't want to pass it on to the, to next year. I'm saying it's time for us to take a look. And that's the reason I'm questionable about making a big move here. If we don't know, and you just say, "We don't know, and I don't know, and they don't know." But we know it's, it's going in the wrong direction.
Mr. Grant, if you got to come in? I guess the budget numbers came from Public Works for infrastructure. And if we did some sort of comprehensive study, and that would take some time, and that would not be in this budget year anyway, if we found it correct. And since we're saying that the budget could be reviewed and adjusted annually, if we saw the need for that, we could make adjustments as necessary.
Right.
It actually came from the stormwater board. They have suggested that, and these are people who have gotten together and looked at what we do, and they have recommended to us this reduction after the review of our budget. What is, what is continually happening is our reserve balance, for whatever reason, continually increases. And we shouldn't, and I agree with their viewpoint, we shouldn't be in the business of just trying to accumulate cash. We should be having a tax rate sufficient to deal with the issues that we have as we have. Now, if we come up with, during the budget process, if we come up with a huge project that needs to be done, we have the capability of modifying the storm rate going forward, whether it be fiscal fifteen, fiscal sixteen, or wherever it might be. But just to accumulate cash, I don't think is the correct thing to do.
Excuse me, Mr. Hupman. Jack had a question.
One reason that we have more money than we have been spending is that we have attempted to put a Band-Aid on this INI over and over because I talked to some people that have actually done this for our city. This comes from a previous term. But they came in and put a small project together, tried to stop the INI from slowing down. But it really hasn't been a project such as what you meant to actually determine what it is and how much it is and what it's going to cost. And I think that's a good idea. But we, they evidently didn't have the funds, and it didn't feel like they had the funds. And they kept letting it, putting a Band-Aid on it, trying to let it build up so they could actually take care of this. We're there now, and I think that's a good idea.
I'll say one more, and then I'm sure you'll say.
I'll, I'll say one more in a minute. I'm sure you'll say.
Good discussion today.
You know, being senior, sometimes you forget. But the, the commission or the committee, the Stormwater Committee recommends quite a few things. But have they recommended projects?
They do review.
Yes. But do they recommend projects?
Yes, they do discuss those projects.
Do we have a list of the projects they think that needs to be done?
I believe that is done, that Joby would have those that they looked at.
Yeah. We try to pilot capital improvement plan that lists the projects and prioritizes those projects as they come up.
Mr. West, would INI be in that list?
It would not at this, at this time.
Would you say, think that INI has, maybe should be included in there?
I would agree.
You get my point? We've got the money. The engineer is saying we have the need. We've got it, spend it, and let's get to, get on with it rather than postpone it until next year. All we want to do is kick the can down the street.
I think that needs to be, actually it should be addressed in our budget time this, this year.
That's gonna be out the street again.
Well, that's, you know, that's what, two months away that we start working on that? But when do we get, when do we get it, Gene? Well, this didn't, this problem, problem did not arise overnight, and it won't be solved overnight. And in fact, the, the, the cost of an INI study, I want to think was something like eight or nine hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little more than that. And, and even, even that can be paid over a number of years. You do so much this year, so much the next year. And I, you know, I think with, with the amount of money that's in that stormwater fund now, I mean, it's, it's not many departments that we have a year's worth of excess revenues sitting there above what we're getting in the normal budget year.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that you want to reduce the taxes. I understand that.
Thank you.
It's very good a vote getter. I don't care about that. I care about the fact that this city needs it, and we want to kick it down. If it costs that much, it surprises me, it costs that much. First, I heard that number thrown out, but...
Well, it's expensive.
And I know it's expensive. I, I know it's expensive. But here's the first time that we got a major expense, and we've got the money to cover. It's like a savings account. My goodness, folks, let's quit trying to take care of all the sexy things, and let's talk about the things that the city needs so desperately. And we, we saved it, whether we liked it or not, we saved it, rather than come back next year and say, well, we gotta do it next year. So we gotta increase the, the fee. Let's get some common sense in this thing.
Okay, I apologize. That's okay. Okay, we have a discussion. One, one more minute, then we're gonna get on with this. Go ahead.
No questions.
I just called a question.
Motion.
Oh, okay. We have a motion in a second. Any others? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
All members voting for the motion except for Mr. Hubbard. I tried. Do you think the rental car tax is a vote getter?
You weren't calling it a tax either. Now you're gonna have to call it a tax.
Then we call it whatever we want to.
You weren't calling it a tax back then.
What did we call it?
I don't know. A fee, probably.
I think it was a rental car tax, I don't know, to be honest with you. But anyway, next item.
Action on reservoir building charge, building change order of thirty-six hundred.
I make the motion that we approve this expenditure.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Action on the Main Street pedestrian connector management contract to BM and K Construction and Engineering. That's a construction management contract. Mr. Cummings?
I move that we approve the BM, BM and K Construction and Engineering contract. It's not in here. It's gonna be a standard contract. I want to understand our standard contract. And we select them as the low bidder for managing that project.
We have a motion in a second. I want to ask a question. But do we need that, a contract before we?
I thought we already had the contract.
We don't have a contract.
I think they're gonna use our standard contract.
If we could fit in your theater, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
If that's a motion.
Or you can just move to approve, Mayor, the signed contract as prepared. Approve.
Okay.
Either way, standard, the motion is prepared.
Anyway, we have, the, the amount of that was how much?
Give me one second, please. The amount, BM and K is fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven, ninety-three. And next, you wanna know the next nearest or?
No, that's okay.
Fifty-two, three sixty-seven, ninety-three.
Right, okay. So have a motion in a second to approve that, the signing of the contract for construction management. And this is on the Main Street pedestrian connector. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, we discussed at our last meeting the Blue Cross Blue Shield Employee Health Insurance Proposal. Mr. Cummings, you wanna?
I make a motion to approve the Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan as presented during the work session for the next annual period beginning April first.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Okay.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
If I might just amend it slightly, it should be to approve the insurance plan, not just Blue Cross Blue Shield, because we have a dental insurer also included. There's a couple other. So by just saying Blue Cross Blue Shield...
No, not everybody included in that.
Everybody included.
Mr. Ed?
It's not like the, are there any major changes in this contract?
I will tell you the changes, the, the, the changes in the base plan are, we tried to limit the changes. They are to the individual and family deductibles, both in and out of network. There is an increase in both as far as the benefits of the plan. The actual in-network copays was a plus benefit to our employees. In one respect is that primary care was reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five. But at the same turn, the specialist office visit was increased to fifty dollars and the urgent care was increased. And then the total family out of pocket, individual and family out of pockets, both in and out of network, were also increased. We tried to address it with as little as possible impact and still stay within the budget, which we actually didn't do. The original plan that came back, which was the same plan as we had, we had a proposed increase of twenty-nine percent in our premiums. We're actually going to end up with a average between the, we get a decrease in dental, but we've got an increase in the health insurance. But the increase we've got it down to relative to the city's cost is twelve and a half percent. Now, some of that is created because of Obamacare changes in terms of our premium.
What was the individual, the...
The new one, the new one, the individual will be fifteen hundred, the family will be forty-five hundred. I believe the prior, I don't have, the prior, I think was lower. I don't have the prior one. But the new individual family deductible was, or individual is fifteen hundred and the family is forty-five hundred.
Okay. The, the motion was amended to request the approval of the employee health insurance proposal instead of just Blue Cross Blue Shield. First, we had a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, we have the next item, item H. Action on the Reduction of Reservoir Yearly Parking Fee From Fifty, From One Hundred to Fifty Dollars. And we are looking at an effective date of April one on that, I believe.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? If not, I'm sorry.
You know, when, when we, this, this came up during the work session, we determined it was only one person that apparently had fifty dollar annual. What are the total revenues that we get from this, you know?
I don't, I don't have the total.
I just wondered, it, it's very possible that if we lower it to fifty dollars, we might collect more net, actually. Because people might pay the fifty that maybe weren't paying before. And maybe some people that are paying fifteen dollars a time or something might end up actually.
That's a good point. You know, time with that will be able to see.
I have a feeling by the morning, so I'll just have to monitor that for a brief decision.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item I, action on three-year contribution to Cherokee County Economic Development in the amount of twenty thousand dollars each year beginning in twenty fifteen. That would be budget year twenty fifteen. I'm assuming October one is that, the year fiscal year it would be beginning in. Mr. Russ?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the twenty thousand dollars here, beginning with fiscal year fifteen.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, Mr. Hubbard?
A question, if it's, I'm for, but the question I have is, if it's budget year fifteen, do we pass it here that we want to pay it? What happens if the next, come January, the new council could...
Sure. They could always do it.
But it's a three-year per deal.
Well, you can't do it three years technically. This is just a commitment that we would like to see, but we cannot commit. But, well, I think we, we met with, that's not an intergovernmental...
That's not what, you know, that's not what they're looking for.
We could do it, we could do it as an intergovernmental agreement. We're not doing it that way. So I think it's a year by year.
We could do it a...
We can have an actual contract with the county. Maybe they might think it could...
We could do it with the county and have a multi-year contract. But I think the, the idea here was, is, is that we would commit to three years if something happened. Someone else could void it, another council, or this council could come back later and say, we don't have the money, we don't want to do it the third year or the second year. But we just wouldn't have to, it really would, we just wouldn't have to come back and, and, and go over it again. We don't have to. Maybe it'll just be put in the next round.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might add, this is not the first time that this has been voted on. It was voted on last year to include it in the budget. And during the budgeting for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, it was decided by the council at that time not to include it. So really, doing this is just saying, this is our intent to include it. Any council at that future time could say, well, we're not gonna include it in the budget.
So we look further along, do we worry this time? Like, we brought it up.
No, I, I don't think so. I think this time we're already gonna do it.
Oh, we think.
A new council, a new council doesn't commit actually till sixteen. So, I mean, you get at least...
Well, I don't think anybody on the council's gonna go against it, so it's probably...
We're making a commitment to the county, and that's what we're...
I agree, I agree. But technically, I think it would.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, item J, rental car tax.
Do you have anything to say?
Well, yes, I do.
We need, we probably need a motion before we open up for discussion, actually. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second. All right, Mr. Hubbard?
Thank you. Just to go back and talk a little bit, I, I had had some meetings with Enterprise. We could not ask for better folks to have as corporate citizens than the people at Enterprise. They're not a public company. They're private. This is a franchise that has so many locations. So it's, it's a pretty family-run business here. And I, and they want to be a good citizens to this city. With that said, we got a new competitor coming in here for them, which is Enterprise. And we're making a, an issue that, that's gonna be the second one. Thus, I remind the council, that you may not know, this will be either the third or the fourth time that they've made a run coming into this city. So I wouldn't count them as permanent, and I will not count them. So I said I would vote if there were two. That doesn't mean I won't vote, but I don't count them as two yet because they haven't proven to me after coming in three, at least three times, that they are a permanent citizens, business citizens like Enterprise is. And I think we should take that into consideration. As far as the hotel tax being used versus the rental tax being used, there is a significant difference. When you stay in a hotel, the majority, and I say majority, I realize that when the pipes are out, you're gonna go stay in a hotel. Majority of the people are coming from outside the city. In the car rental business at Enterprise, as they have put the numbers, and they have far more better numbers that they have shared with me, that they're willing to share in private. They don't want to make it public here for the press. But Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cummings, or any of the council would like to see that. They're kind enough to tell you that, or show those numbers to you. I can tell you right now, you have no idea the size. The numbers that you folks have been talking about, you don't know. I suggest you reconsider. The other thing is, as far as use of the tax, the history of that, he touched on it briefly. It's, well, I touched on it just briefly, that it started out when the city of Atlanta wanted to build a structure or an arena, better known as a capital improvement. They started taking business away from the city of Savannah as far as events. The city of Savannah did the same thing. And if you read in the GMA recommendation, they recommend capital items. Mr. Docmire has told me in private that he is, has some interest if it is used for those type of items because he's a good corporate citizen. Just to put it into, although it's a separate fund, as Main Street program, it is a separate fund. I understand that. And believe, I am for Main Street. But if this can be used for fire, don't make me choose between fire and Main Street. And it can be, and you should consider it.
I just, I want to clear up one thing. The uses are specified by state law. They're actually in the ordinance.
Yes.
And, and fire, I think it can be used for, it may be, well, it may be, but anyway, they're, they're specified. So everybody knows what they can be used for. And, and Main Street qualifies as one of those uses because it's tourism, economic development.
I think it can be used for capital improvements.
Well, it can, it can.
And, and to build a fire station, it will be able to be used.
Capital improvement, but capital improvements for, for economic development, not for other general fund style.
Not general fund style.
I mean, the list is in the ordinance itself.
But it's, it is very broad. It is very broad.
Anyone else? You have something, Mr. Cummings?
I'd like to ask that the motion be amended to include this in the budget for fiscal two thousand fifteen simultaneously with the identification of how that money is going to be used. I personally don't have a problem with the tax. I have the problem of taxing first and then identifying how we're using it. So if, I would like to see the motion, I don't, I guess Mr. Grant made the motion, I'm not sure, that the motion be amended to coincide with the identification of the needs before we implement that tax.
Uh, Mr. Cummings, here's the thing. If this tax doesn't begin until October one, two thousand fourteen, Main Street and other departments will have submitted a budget request at that point. It will then be the council's responsibility to, to approve that at those budgets. So it will be identified prior to the time, at, at the time that it goes into effect.
Okay, so the, because we didn't state it... Okay, so the, because we didn't state a date, so are we stating October?
October one, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay.
Mr. Gray?
I just wanted to say that I spoke with some of the citizens of Canton, and I'm going to read a little bit. I spoke with seventeen people. The youngest was not yet thirty, and the oldest was in their mid-seventies, so a wide range of ages. Ages in rental car uses were people I talked to. My query included business, car, business travelers who rented cars, traveled for their business. It also included people who rent cars for social purposes, for pleasure users. Two of my respondents do not even live in the city, but said that they would most likely rent their car in Canton because that is the closest city to their residence. Everyone else was a city resident. The results of my informal survey were, three people were strongly opposed to the tax. Two have not responded yet to my email inquiry, and twelve persons were not opposed to the tax at all. I just thought you all might like to hear what a small bite of the public had to say about it.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Grant?
Can I be correct in saying that the twenty thousand dollar annual commitment which made to the Cherokee Office of Economic Development, if this excise tax is levy, could be a way of funding that commitment since it is.
It could be, yes. Most definitely could be a way of funding that.
And we did clarify that the money would be collected, but we would entertain how it would be spent by Main Street or anyone. But we're not saying it's going into Main Street's budget.
Right. We're not saying it's going anywhere, it'd be used for economic development, but each of those departments that submit their budget, then we'll consider it at that point. Mr. Russ?
Um, you know, I'm not trying to bring this subject up to cast anything disparaging on a good corporate citizens like Enterprise, but I was partying to a transaction just in the last month, where I rented a car through a dealer. I don't know where the car came from, but I picked up the car at the dealer, and all the paperwork was handled by a, I think it may have even been an Enterprise, it wasn't in Canton. But my question is real simple. How do you define a dealer in Canton? For instance, if Hertz decided to start renting cars in Canton from outside the city limits or from another city that didn't have a tax and delivering to dealers, it's a common thing, I think, that they actually deliver cars for people that have accidents, repairs, whatever. And I'm just trying to figure out how you'd identify that. And the other thing is this, if Enterprise rents outside the city, delivers it to a dealership in another city that isn't taxed, should maybe try to deny tax also? I'm just trying to get a definition of what that means.
I suspect that's addressed in state law, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's whoever collects the money collects the tax. I think, but it's all covered in law.
It is. So someone, if someone rents a car at a dealership and it's delivered to Canton, the tax could have came while.
I don't, I don't.
If the paperwork, if the paperwork actually comes from, it's just, they're just delivering the car, picking it up, it's still taxable?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't, I don't know without looking at the law, but the way that it works like the hotel, motel, it's the rental company is actually just collecting the tax for the city.
So I understand that.
And they actually can take a fee off.
If somebody that would pick up, Hertz dealer in another city that doesn't have a tax and delivers to a Canton dealership, well, Canton doesn't, I mean, the difference between a hotel tax.
Right, but you know what I'm saying.
The hotel rooms are portable when you rent a car. I mean, you're moving it around, you can't do that with a hotel room, it's easier. So I just, it's a question, it only comes up because I was witness to it, and I never knew where the car came from. I'm just saying that that could be a way for someone, I mean, nobody, I don't think, is going to start up a business doing that.
There's a gentleman in the back who'd be glad to answer that question. If you want to recognize him.
I'm just trying to figure out how we do it, because once we go ahead and pass it, it's an issue that might come up, and I just wondered how we would address that.
Would you like to answer? You can, just, he will look at it.
Maybe the only advantage to have him address it, maybe it's come up for them, maybe they know how they do it.
They know how to design.
It's up to you, it's up to you, you want someone to do that, it will. Do you have something to add?
No, I have great.
Okay.
Mr. Buckmeyer, could you answer that one?
Yes, sir. Actually, if anybody that does business in the city, they have to remit the tax. So it's where the business transaction is done. So if a business came in and delivered a car to a dealership, regardless of location, doesn't matter whether they were in Jasper or in Woodstock or in Atlanta, if they came here to do business, they would have to submit taxes at that location. For that transaction.
If you deliver a car outside the city to a dealership in Woodstock, you'd still collect a tax?
Uh, we would, but we have locations.
You pay Woodstock's.
We have locations there.
I know that, that's a bad example, but a city where you don't have.
Hickory Flat.
Hickory Flat.
We would still, we still charge the taxes because it's part of our, we're in the city of Canton.
By that, by that definition, if Hickory Flat had an excess tax, it'd be taxed there too.
Well, we talked the last time about moving outside the city limits and moving to Hickory Flats because they don't have it. We talked about that, but we, we reinvested it.
By our definition, if you do that and deliver cars into Canton, then you pay that tax.
We are paying that tax.
No, if you move to Hickory Flats.
No, they would pay Canton tax then.
Not if they came to get the car in Hickory Flats.
The transaction, the collecting of the money was done in Canton.
If, if we delivered a car, if we were in Hickory Flats and we delivered a car to Canton, correct, we would have to pay the tax. If we had a location in Hickory Flats and the customer came to Hickory Flats, we would not have to submit for the tax.
If Hickory Flat had a tax and we have a tax, you'd collect the tax twice?
We would not, you can only collect it once. Either the county or the city can collect the tax.
Who's going to do it, or is?
To be very honest with you, Cherokee County could pass this tax just like the city could, and then they could control the money. That's, that's the reality, because we're going through that in Cobb County right now, is the city of Marietta's already passed it, and now Cobb County Incorporated is looking to add additional revenues to Graves Stadium.
If the county passed the tax, like they remit it to each community where the transaction occurs, could that?
How, I'm not sure how government politics works, not very much.
Thank you.
I did, I went.
Thank you very much, thank you. Mr. Huggins?
Well, I, you know, this is stuff before us before, it's not an easy decision to make, but I would have to go against it because I'm operating new taxes and I'm promoting stormwater fees. And if you're doing one, it's kind of, you're going one way and one, and going up the other way. You know, you're charging the people more for using the car, you're charging them less for having stormwater. You know, I think we've, we've got good citizens, we ought to reward them by keeping all the taxes and all the fees as long as we can. If, you know, Main Street does a great job, and they, they do some super events, and they can raise a lot of money, you know? I've been in that business before, it's easy to do that, and they do a good job. I think we want our citizens to keep all of our fees and all of our taxes as long as we can.
Mr. Grant?
So kind of clarification on that, I believe the stormwater fees were lowering because we collected more money from the citizens and we're actually spending or resisting for stormwater. And then on this tax we're looking at, which most other cities in Georgia use the GMA, endorses it, is to be used to stimulate economic development, which we're in dire need of. Main Street does a lot of excellent events. Main Street is not capable of raising a lot of money, but we, they spend a lot of money to put those events on. Our Main Street program is severely underfunded. I've been a personal witness to that, and Main Street is much more than about than the events that they put on. Main Street is an economic development tool, and we are not using it that way because we're going out of funding.
I'd agree that Main Street is very much underfunded, I really do. And I think you could, you know, should, should have more in the budget this next year, I was challenged already to look at that. But, you know, again, I just, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I know most of this money from Enterprise, Hertz, whoever else comes in here, it's going to come out of our citizens' pocket, it's not really going to come from them, they're going to have to pass it all.
Anyone else? I believe we have a motion and a second on the table.
Roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Roll call?
Please.
Okay. All right, Mr. Russ?
No. Yes.
No.
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Amazing. Okay, next item. ESI contract, Mr. Cummins?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept ESI as the contract or the construction management company of our wastewater treatment plant improvement project with one change to the last contract I passed out, page three. Mr. Mayor, you and I have discussed that we don't want to allow the construction management company to be able to make design changes. You're a little stronger than I was, I wanted the flexibility in this paragraph. Going into discussion, I make the motion to approve, to approve the contract with D, page three, as a change to it.
Second. And the motion is second, with the changes as included. I have not actually seen the full context of the contract, and I couldn't sign it at this point without doing that. But we have a motion and a second at this point.
Yeah, I wanted to go back and ask Mr. Cummins, what was the word you described, you needed in here? I'm ready to vote for it, but what was that word?
Well, it was the F-word. F three?
Flexibility.
Flexibility. The change that I made is, we have a, the, the issue, the issue is that we have a design. And during the construction process, there could become design changes necessary. To make design changes necessary. We may come to a, it may be a minor change, it may be a major change. What D has done has taken any authority away from the construction management company ability to make the change or discrepancy or conflicts during construction. They do not have the authority without coming to us, and we have the total flexibility within that paragraph of determining whether or not we accept the recommendation for change. And if we do accept it, we have the sole discretion about who and how that change will be made. So it really gives us the control of changes to the design or changes to the construction of that, of all of the enhancements being put in the plant.
But would we not have that option anyway, even if that's not in that plan? Sure we would, the council could do it at any time, right? We'd still have that option. If someone, if, if the, if ESI brings to our attention a problem with the design or with anything else, the council then can make that determination later if they want someone else to do it. So I mean, I don't see that as being one of the, you know, giving us any flexibility. I think we've already got the flexibility.
Well, you do have to, you do have to, I mean, continue, you do have to address how you handle discrepancies and conflicts between the construction company and the designer, and we've got a project management company or an engineering project management company in the middle. And this just clarifies that they have no authority to do it, that we're going to do it. You could take it out and say, okay, and we assume we got that right anyway. All we've done is stated, this is our right to do that. And I think it's a necessary, to me, it's a necessary thing because it makes it very clear that they have no authority to do anything, and we're not after the fact saying, by the way, you shouldn't have done that, that was our right.
Mr. Cummins, would that, would that slow up the process if we were, say, like, we were involved in a contract and the situation arose tomorrow morning? And we're going to have, it's going to be two more weeks before we have another meeting to approve or change? Am I reading that wrong?
Some of it you're reading wrong, because some of it would never come to council, because, let's take a, let's take a hypothetical. Let's, they've designed something and they've got a pipe flowing straight, straight, in a, in a straight direction. And in the process of construction, they find that there's something underneath that pipe that they have to avoid. And so they reroute the pipe. That is a, that is a design change or a discrepancy in conflict, and that could be decided without ever coming to council. That could be decided and immediately by internally, and I don't, doesn't matter who gets designated, could be immediately decided by us, yes, make that quick, reroute and proceed. They may come to a major design change that requires additional funds, and that would have to come before us because it's a major issue. This doesn't, this just basically says that any change or any conflict or any discrepancy is at our discretion on how to handle.
What I, my point was this, is that when you say any change, and it might just be a matter of semantics, I don't know, any change, if a contractor reads that by the word itself, and he says, no, I can't go forward because of any change, I've got to go, I've got to go to the city.
That's.
And you say major and minor, I don't know what's the description, what the definition of major and minor is.
What you're describing is standard operating procedure anyway. If the construction company comes up and says they have to make a change, that's going to go to, to the project, engineering project management company anyway.
Right. But then, well, there's a conflict, we've gotten to the point there's a conflict, they can't make a decision. One says this, one says that, and we're not at a decision point, and it says any.
Well, here's the. Call a special call, meaning if it was some emergency or something that's going to hold up. And I don't, I don't think it's going to hold up the project. The problem you're going to get in, and I've said this before, the problem you end up with is if you let another engineering firm tweak the design plans or anything to do with those plans that the original designer has prepared, then that original designer is not going to accept the liability for the end result. I mean, the, if, if, if you got the person who designed these improvements, you know, certainly our construction management firm should bring up any problems or concerns that they have to the, to the city and of course to the original designer. But we've invested four hundred and seven thousand dollars in getting this thing designed, and we need to have a little bit of confidence in, in those that designed it, I think. And I don't think we ought to have any, by any stretch of the imagination, allow the tweaking of it by another engineering firm of some original plans that were, were prepared on this plant because of just simply, if something goes wrong at the end, it's, no, it's not my fault, it's theirs, they made the change, no, it's yours, you did, no, it's yours, you know, back and forth. A lot of finger pointing, and that's what concerns me more than anything.
It's, I guess an analogy would be, if I might, for analogy might be, is that we've got, we've got an automobile design, and it's going to be built. And in the process of building that automobile, the transmission doesn't exactly fit the way the design was intended. We do not want the management, the construction management or the overseer of the, of the management process making a design or a change to how that transmission is. They would be required with this clause to bring that to us, and we would have total latitude as to whether we, A, needed to go back to the original designer, B, made the decision internally, or, well, basically, those are the two, or we could even say, let another design company do it if we so choose. But we get into problems of accountability, as the mayor says, if, if I change that transmission and the engine fails, who's to blame? and the engine fails, who's to blame? It, you know, the, the designer will say it's the fault of the transmission and the transmission person, or the company that changed the transmission will counterwise and say, we didn't do anything to the engine. And so this really gives us, I think, the flexibility of making the decisions, whether it's a simple one or whether it's a major one.
Second.
Do we have the knowledge of making the decisions on design changes to sanitation facility? Would we not have consult with the original design firm?
Absolutely.
If you like, hire them?
Absolutely.
And then if we would have to do that anyway, are we creating redundancy here and?
Well, it's like this, you've got a surgeon, you've got a surgeon says, I'm gonna do the surgery this way, and now you've got another surgeon saying, you do it a different way. I think I'd like to look at both options rather than just taking the one option. And that allows us to look at both options.
And if we make a mistake, those?
If we make a mistake or a decision, it's us. And in the minute, after we determine this, I've got a follow-up on it.
So does this contract say that the management company cannot make design changes?
Says it can't make it without our approval, but-
The question is, who is our? That would be made, who is our?
Well, that could be established between the mayor, the city manager, whoever it is will designate that responsibility.
Should we, that's not clear at this point.
Should we say that if it, a change is gonna occur by major expense or a major loss of time?
Change a fuel pump, small expense, you still affected the engine.
Well, it's true, but I'm just talking about if they, if they can come to an agreement and it's a small change.
But then it's, if the agreement could be reached between the mayor and the, and our, and our city engineer who's responsible for that.
Okay.
Or between the city manager and that engineer, however that wants to be.
I see pros and cons, but I know either way.
Well, I, you know, I'm a little bit uncomfortable not being able to see the entire agreement here that I have looked at in the past, but I'd like to kinda, you know, see the, see the whole thing before, at the end.
Do we need this approval tonight on this? Is that what you-
Well, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily have to have it tonight, I mean, you know.
We're, we're in a position where we're, the funding's been moved forward or moving forward on the construction as far as heavy constructors and who is the construction company. Again, the only change to the contract, Mr. Mayor, is paragraph D and otherwise it's the same contract we had last meeting, so.
Well, I had, I had worked at that and there were several other changes that I had made in there other than that one item, and I'd like to see how this, how this works and read, reread those changes that I had requested initially, which is, which really does refer to design by the construction manager. And I just felt like we needed to take out all references to design by the construction management firm because if they're allowed to make those designs, you got to, you said, she said.
There are no references to design, it's discrepancy.
Well, you gotta read that other thing there and I think it does refer to that. My question- Parts that I marked out there certainly did refer to that.
Is this gonna slow, we can't vote again for a month, is this gonna slow us up?
Absolutely.
Are they starting construction when?
Well, it's not when this darkens.
Well, you signed that contract, haven't you, on that one?
Not heavy contractors, they're constructors, it's coming back. We've signed the loan, we don't wanna affect the loan and the start date of the draw on the loan because if we affect the loan, we're gonna affect the interest rate and I stand to be corrected, but if we ever had to refinance the loan again, we could experience over that twenty years as much as eight hundred thousand dollars more in interest charges. So timing is of importance to this and the, I wish, I just don't see the dilemma because the-
Could we pass this with the contingency that Mr. Mayor will read and get his approval and he has the authority to, to read that, so we could move forward?
Well, I wouldn't, it's not an ordinance, so I don't, couldn't be-
No.
You know, you could, it could be subject to the approval if you did that.
Could you go along with that?
I just don't see any problem with this, we, this gives us total flexibility.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm the one that has to sign this thing and I've got a problem right now.
We have a motion, it's second.
Roll call.
Okay. All right.
Roll call.
Okay. Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes. Yes.
All right. We will, we will take a, take a look at that and if it needs change, if I, if I'm not satisfied with it, I will not be signing it, I can assure you, and there's no provision for it otherwise, but there's, there's a section in there that really does concern me.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think signature's a matter of formality of whether you sign it or whether you don't.
Well, it's important to me.
In the, in the same line, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we perform what is called a quality assurance, quality control review.
I don't believe that was on the agenda, was it?
It's ESI.
Uh, that's a different issue completely. I don't believe that should be on this, at this media. We could be happy to put that on the work session in March, but I just seem to don't believe that, that, that's a totally different issue than the construction management.
Well, I'd like to then ask, ask for a vote of the council whether or not that's a different issue.
I don't think we need to do that because it's, it's totally different issue.
Before I could vote, I think I'd better understand what we're-
Go ahead and explain it to us, if you like.
In the normal process of creating a design of this magnitude included in normally in design is a function called quality assurance and quality control review. So if you engage an engineering company, they internally, as a standard practice on major projects, include people not related to the design to go through the design and do a, this assurance and quality control review to ensure that we have a good design. Now, my dilemma has been is that I have received multiple comments that we have design issues with the design. It is a significant project and it might, do not believe that this function was undertaken during the design and I think that it needs to be performed to identify first, any issues there might be with the design, it is not a design change, a statement of problems and a risk assessment of any issues and recommendations. If you don't do this, and the reason I suggest doing it is that we're dealing with an eight million dollar project, we're dealing with a, with a project that has a high impact on the city, if there is a problem at the end, and for example, one of the main requirements that I had, and it's also a question that's being risen, is the capacity of the plant. At the beginning of the design project, I actually discussed with the designer that we needed to have growth in that plant, the ability to grow on a limited site because the city is going to grow. Currently, we process on average about two and a half million gallons a day, I stand to be corrected on the exact amount. We currently, with the way we're structured, we can do three point three million. With this design, is we will be able to do four million gallons of that. The designer has stated that we can go to six point seven, but there has been other people that question our ability to go to six point seven. Now, why is that a major issue? First, if we get to four and we can't expand our current plant, we would have one of two options. And those options are either build a whole new plant to handle everything, which would be horrendously expensive, it might be as much as eighty million dollars, or build a second plant, which would also be very expensive, probably not that level of expenditure. This quality assurance, quality control review would give us a second view of the design. It's relatively inexpensive when you compare it to a potential risk. Now, that risk may not exist, but I just don't have the comfort feeling, having been told by several parties that this design has issues.
How much time, how much money?
The exact answer is thirty thousand dollars. It will take approximately, it can run coincide with everything else we're doing and it will take approximately forty-five days to do. And I'm trying to prevent a major potential, I don't know if the, I don't know what the potential of not being able to expand that capacity.
If I may, just, just, I have to say this, I have to say this, when we get rainwater coming through that plant, you know what that meter rates?
I know.
Eight. We're talking about average of two to three, maybe four, it reading eight and it won't go any further.
Well, actually, it hit thirteen and a half one day.
But, but, that's, that's what we, if we wanna address a problem, I talked about it earlier.
I just have a comment, if there are major concerns about the design, if we just load it on a contract, to approve a contract, I would like to add that information before I reach the last vote.
Well, the contracts to manage, you've already, you've already-
And this is a separate contract.
Construction and all that.
Yeah, they're talking about design changes, authority for design changes, and there was no indication that there were major concerns about the design. It isn't related.
Well, it seems like a different issue to me. I mean, it's a separate contract totally from the one that we talked about, the one that was on the agenda. So I think it really ought to go to a work session before we do that. And if it can be done at the same time, then there's, obviously there's no, no interference or delay because of this.
So you say you fart now?
No, I'm, so I was, I'd be opposed to that, bit, honestly. That's actually thirty seven thousand dollars and all it says is, we don't have any faith in our design engineering firm.
Who's gonna, who'd be designated another firm to do this?
Well, I think it should be a different firm, but I would suggest ESI.
Okay.
Mr. Givens?
Who is the design engineer of this?
Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, his firm?
Okay, so.
Yeah. Infratech, which is now a chemical.
Right. Well, when you were speaking, I thought it was a different one.
Yeah.
But I will, let me also say-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me also say that after being on this council, when we went through numerous changes with the reservoir, had they had done something like this back then, I think they would have saved several million dollars. Thirty thousand seems like a lot, but it might not be considered how much, any millions we overspent, how many times we had replaced things like liners that had just been put in, had to replace it again, things of that nature. I think maybe it might be a smart move to consider.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's just like doctors, lawyers, any of the professions, if you get two of them together, you don't get different opinions.
True.
And, and I'm afraid that's the case we would be in, which brings us back to the council, which we're not qualified to, with our engineers who are qualified, to make that call. Did we not go through some of that exercise several months ago down in the library? They're talking about this builder versus that builder, doing it this way versus that way?
Well, if I'm right, Mr. Mayor?
I believe Mr. Russ had his hand up a minute ago.
It's, yeah, a number of times. It seems like one of the major concerns, Mr. Mayor, is your willingness to sign this agreement and I understand that there, that may not be a great power, but it's important to us that you agree with this also. So would a quality check, which is Mr. Cummings is suggesting, give you the comfort that you think you need to sign the agreement?
There's two separate issues.
I understand that, but what if we simultaneously agreed to do that contract and do a quality assurance check at the same time? Would you feel more comfortable to see someone else saying, these are, these are not issues or these are issues?
Well, I would feel more comfortable-
Does it, I mean, would you sign it?
I would feel more comfortable to look at the actual ESI agreement first as it, as it is finalized intact and, I mean, you know, and then, you know, I might consider this, but right now, I, I don't know that it's necessary. I mean, the more we can do, the better off you're gonna be, there's no doubt about that, but is it necessary? We have, we have-
You won't know if it's necessary until the mistake is made, then we-
But you know who, but you know who-
Yeah, but somebody's gotta stop it and then it delays the process and costs money ultimately. The problem is in the middle of our pocket if there's a mistake.
Well, you're gonna pay money here on this thing.
Yeah, it might be small.
And what happens if you pay money here and then you have problems still? You pay twice.
Do we have the design representative from ESI?
Yeah, yeah. Have him speak.
I'd like to hear from him.
Sure.
You didn't know you were gonna be-
No, that's fine, I'm-
You ready, big guy?
I guess. Yeah, let me, let me, let me say a few things, just trying to address this. That there's, there's kind of two sets of issues on this plant site that they, at least I consider two sets of issues. One is the fact that we're working on site there, the original plant was started up in nineteen sixty-nine or seventy and we expect, and I expect that ESI, I think they probably also expect the fact that with, with working on a, a site where there's been pipes and wires and all kinds of things put underground out there for, for going on forty-five years or so, there will be some things that are gonna be found that nobody knew were there and we'll have to make a few changes. We don't expect anything major, but you know, it's not economical to dig up the whole multi-acre site to find every pipe and wire and heat the plumbing up. So there will be some, some changes, I'm sure, during the construction and I think you should expect some. I don't think they're gonna be major, but they're big, there's some pieces there. And hopefully those can be worked out at, you know, minor cost to, to the city, hopefully not help. I guess the second issue is the question of, is there gonna be room to, to expand on that site? One of the reasons this, this project is fairly complicated to design was that we took a lot of care to make sure that you could expand on that site. That's the reason we're having to do some fairly complicated concrete work. And, you know, we, we are going to four million gallons a day and that's an average daily flow and it can process up to about, about ten. In the future, we can go to, to six point six or six point seven by adding some other structures on both ends of the plant. We, if y'all remember, there was a big piece of property, I guess it was an acre, is that right? Somebody, if we got, we got that, we saved the majority of that for future expansions. And that's where a lot of that future expansion would go. There'd also be required, requirements to put some other things on the other end of the plant, but, you know, those of you that've been there, you know how tight the site is. It's just really, really about the type, as tight of a point or plant size I've ever worked on. So, yes, there is, there is tech build of expansion, absolutely. It's, it's gonna cost some money. I mean, it's, you know, it's quite a few million dollars to, to do it, but when you need it, you can do it. But if you wanna have somebody- But if you want to have somebody else look at it, that's, that's okay, we don't, we don't have any problem with doing that.
Could I answer a question?
Sure.
Mr. Thompson, would, would this be unusual to have a, a second opinion from another engineering design to come in and look at it, or in your experience of many years, would you find this a little unusual?
Uh, it's, it's not that unusual. I've seen it done quite a few times. It's not done, it's not done that often, I mean, we, you know, we have done extensive quality control in-house as far as the, the basic design team members that, that have worked on it. I mean, we, you know, we had a number of very experienced people working on this project, so...
What's your thoughts about two engineering firms, one looks at it one way, one looks at it the other, to come to a resolution of what's right?
Well, I guess that just depends on what the issues are. I mean, it's like you, somebody said, you've got two professional people, a lot of the stuff that we do in engineering is based on the, the experience of the people that are working on it, or their preferences, just like surgeons, different surgeons like to do surgeries different ways, different lawyers like to do things different. I would hope that if you want to do this, it could be done in a spirit of cooperation, and somebody then just come up and say, okay, we're just gonna throw, throw a bunch of mud on the designer, here's some, here's something that we would do different, and, and you, and you can, and that's possible, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that...
Would you lead that person that would interface with another firm?
Uh, I would do part of it, and our, our plant project manager, Mr. Hewitt, I think most of you know, Brian, Steve, and Steve's been doing this probably thirty-five years, so, and he's a, he was the lead designer on the project, so he would probably be the main in place, but I would be available to help out if necessary.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
I have, I have one other, one other question, was, were there other quotes received other than ESI's quote on that quality assurance?
There were none.
Were not?
Okay. Did we ask for another?
And it doesn't, it would fall under professional services, and it's really not required.
I know that.
Money is budget, so the answer was no, because of the timeframe, we tried to work all this out in the last week.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, there's no motion, and I won't make a motion, I just gave you my opinion of what should be done, and you can, you can either decide that it's part of the issue or isn't part of the issue, or you can decide to put it as the mayor's recommended in the work session, you know.
Isn't there a motion on the floor in a second?
Well, I guess I did make a motion to do this, but I was told that I, I don't believe there was a second to that motion, because it was suggested it goes to a work session, not a same...
No, but what, what I'm asking is, could you modify your motion to include that quality check?
Oh, we already approved it.
Oh, okay.
Don't you have complete authority?
No. I know it's, it's over twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, can you get one done for twenty thousand dollars?
I don't know, but I'll vote it.
I'll vote for twenty. I suggest we put it on the March sixth meeting for discussion, and, and maybe ask that we get another quote on that.
If we were, put this on the March sixth work session because of the timeframe, could we declare this an emergency and vote on it that night as well?
If, if it is an emergency, we can.
Timewise, is it?
Well, actually, it's gonna take forty-five days.
It's gonna take them forty-five days to do it.
It's gonna take us now seventy-five days.
But that is not gonna hold up the beginning of the project, is what I understand, that would be done as the project moves along.
But the later that we do it, the more we've advanced in the project, moving at...
But that's, as long as we get, get something, start to get equipment on the personnel there, and, well, let's just go ahead and put that on the March sixth work session, and, and it will, if, if it becomes a critical issue, we'll, we'll deal with it at that time.
Have a call.
If we have to, absolutely. Okay, I believe that was the last item, the exception of the mayor's report, I wanted to mention about residential, or not just residential, but actual garbage fees, particularly residential garbage fees, I guess it is anyway. I, I think that this is the year that we're gonna be looking at going out for proposals, bids, or however we're gonna handle that, whether or not we're going to actually bid it as it is now, or maybe as an alternate or separate bid, bid it as though the, the waste provider would actually handle the collection and billing, which is what they do in some cities, so that's something we would want to take a look at for that. We'll need to get that on our work session to discuss how we want to proceed, because we'll need to be moving fairly quickly if we're gonna go out for all these proposals. Jack, can you?
I just want to go on that.
Oh, it's on something else, okay, hang on just a minute.
On the garage, Mr. Mayor, that's my intention, to get our staff looking at different options so that we can bring it to council, the different options with a recommendation. The contract actually comes up, I believe, October first, and we hope to bring it to council much earlier than that, what the options are, and a recommendation.
I, I would hope we would move that fairly quickly, because maybe in April, May, really get moving on that, because it, it does end up taking longer to, Richard, please.
I hope to have something by the April work session, and it'll depend on waste management, of course, getting back to us.
Right, but I think as we look at these fees, and we look at what we're bringing in versus the actual cost of that utility, I think there's a very good likelihood that we could be able to roll back the entire operation, everyone's garbage fee, I think that's a possibility, if we keep it in-house here, or even if we put it in the, with the provider entirely. Anyone else have a question? Not, I'll leave it, anything, what's your...